Harvest Center will just be learning about the City Start Blueprint Grant. I also wanted to note that we will be having a special work session on December 7, which is this Wednesday at 5:30 to discuss Council Meishri's proposed ordinance. So that's this week. Ms. Lano, take it away.
Thank you, Madam Chair. City Council and Mayor Gradisar is on Zoom, attending by Zoom this evening. I do have a COVID update to begin. The one-week cumulative positivity case count on the CDBCH website was 208.3 for Pueblo. And the one-week positivity rate is 13.1% this afternoon. And Pueblo County does have eight days of declining or stable COVID hospitalizations at Parkview. Moving on to the ARPA update, on the work session agenda this evening is an ARPA presentation from Michael Batello and Michelle Garcia from the Collaborative Management Program. The mayor is recommending the $25,000 funding request that will assist at-risk economically impacted students and families. And the rest of the information and presentation will come from them. And also, the ARPA Census Track Small Business Grant Letter. Their offer will be emailed and mailed to the qualifying small businesses this week with a request to return their intent to accept the grant by 12:31, by the end of the year. And then we'll move forward to bring to City Council the amount and the businesses, the list and the names and the amounts. President Graham also requested an update on the demolition status of the Albany Hall on Seventh Street, as a couple of other councilors have emailed in the past week. The current status from our Public Works Director, Mr. Hayes, is that he is in communication with the EPA contractor for a full demolition plan and the design. There is not a current date on the expected receipt of the plan. Andrew will provide any updates as he hears from EPA. But right now, there is definitely interest and requests for to move forward with that demolition as soon as possible. And that does conclude the city updates this evening. And do you have any questions or directions for future information?
Thank you, Ms. Lano, for those updates. What questions are there from Council? Councilor Florrie?
Who's paying for the demolition of the Albany?
It likely has to come to City Council, and we'll wait for the information from Director Hayes.
So.
Oh, here he comes. Thank you.
Good evening. Councilor Florrie, so to answer your question is that the city would likely have to fund the cost of the demolition upfront. The owner has indicated that he has no resources to be able to do the demolition himself, and so the city will be on the hook to do that.
So if we placed a lien on the land?
We would. Once, we haven't expended anything out there. We've expended a small amount for barriers and protection to keep folks away from the dangerous edges of the site. But we have not expended any city funds yet on the planning or demolition yet.
Has anyone looked into the owner's other assets? I mean, it seems to, this can be an expensive demolition. I see it coming. It's not a small building.
It's not.
And.
This particular one also is a little bit complicated because of the open-air nature of the contamination with the asbestos. So worst case is that all of it will need to be treated as an air abatement, where all of the waste from the demolition is considered asbestos-contaminated material. So that's worst-case scenario. That's partly why we're trying to take the, go through this extensive planning and design of this, so if we can minimize the upfront costs. But that worst-case scenario was likely somewhere around $1 million, I think, to demo.
And what about the, is there, is there any other interests? I know that our city attorney wants to, he wants to say a few things, but is there a bank that's in first place ahead of us? And is there a likelihood that this is going to be a cost that the city's going to have to bear 100%?
I can continue, or I'll defer to Dan.
It, it depends on whether there are hazardous materials on the property. If there are, asbestos comes to mind, then I think we want to involve the state. We have to get a permit anyway from the state, but the state and local health departments to have them as partners going through this process. Because they have remedies under federal law and state law that the city does not have, including a personal liability of the owner.
So that, one of the other pieces to your question was, will the city have to bear the full burden of this cost upfront? Yes. Just like our other demolition, you know, for a residential property or anything else, the demolition of dangerous buildings code has an assessment process by which we would bring the costs of demolition to you. There'd be a public hearing. We would assess those costs via ordinance. And that would be recorded against the building or against the property. That's the, that's the way it would likely move forward.
Again, to my question, is anybody else involved is having a lien on that property? Besides, we ultimately will, but are we going to be in second place? Is there a mortgage company involved?
No, we're, we're, and again, it depends on what kind of lien. If it's a hazardous material lien, it's a super lien.
Okay.
And it goes ahead of the deed of trust. There is a mortgage on the property with a local bank.
Because this was, this was more than just them not being able to pay for the demolition. They were negligent in not keeping their insurance policy in place so that if they had a fire, that would have taken care of the debris removal. So it's very frustrating that we're finding ourselves in there, but it's, it's reality, like they say. So thank you. Oh, I had another question having to do with ARPA. On the Census Track and the small businesses that we're going to be dealing with, is there a limit as to what their gross sales are going to be to qualify?
Councilor Florrie, the, I think that the top amount was $200,000 in sales.
Okay, I just needed to know that. Thank you.
Councilor Warner?
Yeah, Dennis, you know, we've been around this block a few times with demos. And, you know, as you know, nobody, that, that lot's not going to be worth a million dollars. And city liens are, they are priority liens, so it'll stay there. But many cities have put in place an ordinance that, that requires the insurance company to give that, those funds, because you insure it for, for replacement value. And that is an agreement between you and the insurance company. So they'll just cut you a check for the whole thing. Some cities have demanded that that cost of raising the property is given to the city in escrow until it's completed. And we brought this up before, and the mayor thought that needed to go to the state. But every state that has adopted that started at a city level. So that's something else we can revisit.
Well, the issue here is that they, they let their insurance lapse.
Well, you don't know that.
Well, we do know.
They let the insurance lapse? Is that what they said? Well, for other things, I mean, we can definitely, definitely go there. Because most of the time, they check, they take that whole check for replacement value and they run. And that's why we're left with it. So we can look at that ordinance. It's not reinventing the wheel. It's not my idea. It's what other cities have done. It's come up to a state. And remember, we had Lisa from a city attorney's office come and explain that to us.
Other questions or comments? Ms. Lano, for the ARPA, I know that we've discussed several times about having the work session about ARPA, which is going to be kind of that overall list of projects, sorry, ARPA status update. I see it now on January 9th, and we were not going to have any more ARPA presentations before then. Is that wrong? That's how I understood it.
Mayor, the mayor's recommended the current one for this evening incident to the fact that it's, it's going to support, if approved, those families that are at risk through the winter months, and there's homeless youth involved. So this particular one, he'd recommended before the new year. Otherwise, you are correct. There, there is two others that he's wanting to recommend, but only with the, with the presentation at year end, in the last meeting of the year.
I see that. It's December 27th. Are those the same ARPA deals that, in terms of like, you know, immediate help for the wintertime, or?
No, those are, those are submittal requests that were submitted at the first round back in, I don't know, earlier in this year, at the committees and had postponed in the internal committee and the external committee. We're waiting until there was appropriate time for them to go back and work on it together. And now we're at that stage. And so, you know, you, I think that you'll probably want to see the, the current expenditures and what's remaining. But in the meantime, they will both present separately on two separate requests.
Okay. Final questions or comments from Council? Councilor Warner?
Okay, just so everybody knows, I just came from the dentist's office, so I'm not having a stroke. And if you see me, you know, drooling from my drink, it's just because my mouth is still numb. Okay?
Noted. Thank you. All right. So our next agenda item is a food truck union presentation. So can I have Mr. Watts and Ms. Ames to the podium, please? Just a little bit of a setup. We actually had originally had, we, we asked for you guys to come speak way back when you guys were in Mineral Palace and were experiencing all those issues with parking. I'm so glad that you guys are now here to talk to us about it. So I, I'm, I look forward to the next summer, you know, of the food truck union. Okay. And then the mic's going to turn on with a button on the bottom.
Thanks so much for having us. Yeah, we're looking forward to it as well. Um, so basically, we just want to thank you guys for having us here today, first and foremost, to discuss kind of our future vision for the food truck union and just kind of some of the hurdles that we look to overcome partnering with the city in the future. So the food truck union, our kind of overall overreaching goal is just to help encourage entrepreneurship and commerce in the city with, with food and sharing that with the community. Excuse me. So some of the problems that we've addressed locally, we feel like there was a lot of issues with mobile food unit compliance licensing. So we've kind of helped streamline that for the city, got a comprehensive list of the trucks that wanted to be licensed. As you can see, we started with 11 trucks and we ended the year with 55 vendors licensed in the city of Pueblo. And a thing we hear a lot in Pueblo is that we don't have enough options for food. And I feel like this summer and this season, we, we kind of helped to address that problem a little bit as well. Whoa, what's going on there? All right, sorry. So we hope to expand that within the next year to bring more food options to the city, more healthy food to the city. And we, we helped to kind of bring people back out to the parks and make it more of a family environment. Not that it ever wasn't, but I feel like some of our parks have been kind of utilized, like not for big events recently. And we brought kind of people back out to the parks on Fridays and Sundays and encouraged out-of-town food truck units to come in and get licensed and be a part of our city's tax system. So I, the way we kind of did that was partnering with the city, offering extra items for, you know, items that aren't typically seen in Pueblo. And. Yeah, you go for it.
So I think a big part of what we did to try and solve some of the problems that we saw was to get compliance happening with the mobile food units. There's a lot of, there's just so much red tape and confusion and barriers to entry for just county food trucks that wanted to serve inside the city, and they didn't know how, didn't know what the first step was to take. They didn't know how to get licensed, how to get a city sales tax license. So we began, just as volunteer citizens, to sort of start to bridge that gap, to help to teach and train them how to do those things. And as a result, the majority of the food trucks that serve in the food truck unit were already local food trucks. They already were inside the city of Pueblo, but they served somewhere like Colorado Springs, because it was easier to get licensed to serve in Colorado Springs and pay sales tax there than it was to serve right inside their own community, their own back door.
Or in the county to potentially just avoid paying city sales tax.
Yeah. So we tried to overcome those barriers for them as much as possible through teaching and training and just education of those food truck owners. And then in addition to that, we helped the city to hold those, those trucks accountable for that compliance by submitting at first, on a weekly basis, every single week, we submitted every single name, every single, you know, tax ID number for every single food truck, which was really an overwhelming administrative task for us. I think that's where a lot of our initial frustration came from, was as individual volunteer residents, who are we to be holding any other business owner accountable to pay their city sales tax with, or else not participate? Or even to know whether or not that business is in compliance with their city sales tax. So that was a lot of our initial frustration that I know Counselor Graham assisted us with. We got to meet with the city with the mayor's office. Laura Solano helped us through that a lot. And we were very grateful to you guys for that participation and kind of teaching and training us and how to do this as event coordinators, because it wasn't our, a part of our initial plan at all. This was a real pilot project. And we kind of went through trial by fire, learning how to interact with the city, how to interact with Parks and Rec, how to interact with Public Works for road closures. These were some big challenges that we had to really learn how to, what to do, how to do it.
So basically, going forward, as she mentioned, it was kind of a daunting administrative task for us all. And one of those big issues for us was just kind of organizing the whole thing, because it was just the two of us. So for 2023, we hope to kind of transition, transition this from, it was an LLC this year in our pilot year, just so we could get things rolling. We could get the porta potties rented, the dumpsters paid for, the, the permits with an LLC in charge of it. But next year, we hope to kind of switch that to a co-op model, where each owner is kind of investing at the beginning of the year rather than paying a weekly fee. And then we would all kind of decide things together. And here, we've kind of presented some of our initial asks for our steering committee. So these, we've just kind of selected some of the more active members of the food truck union to help be a part of the co-op to run the event in the future.
All these guys would be here tonight. They are out working catering events. But you can see, these are a lot of our strategic food truck owners. They all are city residents. And they all are really invested in making sure that this happens in 2023 in a way that doesn't just consider food truck owners, also considers the community, the geography of the community, the ethnic background of the community, and the socioeconomic statuses of the community. Are all important elements that we want to engage in moving forward, because we don't just seek to serve in Mineral Palace and in City Park. Really, that we have a big broader vision for the food truck union as a whole to help meet some of the community needs inside the city of Pueblo, especially in the summertime. When we have kids out of school, we have major food deserts. We believe that using the co-op model, we can connect food truck owners with local farmers by creating buyers, buyers cooperatives, so that we can get, you know, deals on local produce and local meats into our local food trucks. And then with your partnership as a city and with Parks and Rec, if we can open the city parks to registered, licensed, compliant mobile food units, we can begin to bridge some of that gap for the food deserts by supplying food, produce, meat, all locally purchased, or with the goal of increasing local buyership, so that we really start an economic cycle in the city that's both community-focused as a nonprofit or as a cooperative, but that also generates true economy with the businesses who participate in that cooperative.
And kind of one of the ideas we had to make that possible would be to do like prepackaged meal kits that you would prepare at home, containing local produce and healthy proteins. That could be a situation where EBT could be used to be purchased. All of us are mobile food vendors, essentially. So if we had a prepackaged item made at a commissary kitchen that they cook at home, that's not a prepared food item. We would need to change the licensing a little bit to make us more of a blended grocery-serving mobile food unit as well. But we just really feel like that could help some of the issues here in town. And what we envision is local food truck owners, two or three at a time, no more than three at the small parks, kind of showing up on given days of the week and really taking ownership of that neighborhood, of the people they meet, of the children that come to the truck. And not like myself, I serve ice cream and waffles, not the most healthy option, but delicious nonetheless. But we could still serve healthy food from our refrigerators and our licensed units. So that's just something we, we hope to partner with the city in the future.
Yeah, I think we jumped ahead a little bit in that, but going through our timeline of this summer, if you want kind of the backstory, as you all definitely saw, I'm sure via our very popular Facebook page, that we launched this with, you know, a few 11 trucks in hand, and immediately the popularity expanded. It got out of our control, out of everybody's control so fast. We had no idea how, what high demand there was, and we had no idea how many trucks were waiting in the wings. Were not licensed, but were ready to serve immediately as soon as we could get them licensed and compliant. So actually pulling all those trucks into compliance was kind of our biggest issue between April and July, understanding how to navigate that with the city. And then in July, in June and July, we saw huge growth at Mineral Palace and decided to expand into City Park. That's when we came to you for the road closure revocable permits, because we realized there were also huge safety issues that triggered mass outrage online when we didn't have accessibility, when we didn't have, it really wasn't safe with cars driving between. We needed those road closures to ensure safety. We needed those road closures to ensure accessibility, so that those were paved spaces that people could access the trucks from. And then in September, we tried to keep going, but as fall came, as school was in, we definitely saw a huge drop in sales, and it became really hard for the trucks to staff each of those locations. So we are really critically looking back at this year and using it to think responsibly and make wise decisions about the coming year. We're thinking we'll reduce the season from April to the end of August, instead of April all the way to the end of October, and have two special events, one in September and one in October, where all the trucks can participate. That way, we don't kind of tap out the, the market as a whole, or the truck owners themselves, as they participate. And then we talked to you a little bit about now this vision that we have for the future. But we definitely want to, don't want to dive into all of that without thanking you guys as a city council, without saying a special thanks to Parks and Rec, specifically to Lindsay Martin, to Ranger Maturoshi, to Ranger Isaac Garcia, and to all of the Parks Trash Services, because they obviously made a huge impact for all of the truck owners and everything they did. We'd love to thank Counselor Graham for all of her help. Counselor Atencio as well, we know attended in person several times. Mayor Gradisar and all of the mayor's office really appreciate you guys, as well as Andrew from Public Works. We got a whole coaching in how city roads work. That should be, like, that should be a part of public high school in the city is to understand public works, because it makes a big difference in how we felt about our taxpayer dollars and everything we were trying to do as well. And then, of course, a really special thanks to Nancy Baker from the City Sales Tax Department for coaching us step-by-step through how to, how to do all of this and how to make it work for everybody. So in conclusion, our ask for the 2023 season from City Council is first and foremost, we really cannot maintain this as two people or as all the truck owners without Mineral Palace Park event services. All these services are things that were provided without conflict or problem at City Park. But at Mineral Palace, we paid for and supplied the dumpster. We emptied and handled all the trash services ourselves. We also supplied the porta potties and ensured that they were cleaned out and ready for every single event. A hand washing sink was provided by us. We supplied all of our own tables for use, because we weren't permitted to use park tables. And we would really like to ask the city to fund a full-time ranger at Mineral Palace Park on Fridays for the summer season, because it is definitely the bigger of the two events, and it's more well-attended. And we'd really appreciate any city support in making that happen in the 2023 season. If you could do that, it would free up our administrative time to really pursue some of the more community impactful and, it just, it would give us time. We need a lot more time.
So that we could, yeah, kind of focus on that, that plan we have for the future for kind of addressing the food desert issue. Also, just for time for our co-op to kind of gel together and figure out our vision for the future and the food truck union.
And I think, I don't know if this is a resolution. I don't know if this is an ordinance. I don't know what we'd be asking for from you all. If you could give us guidance in that, we'd appreciate it. But we would love permission to operate as a food truck union, any food truck union registered truck, because we've ensured their compliance. We know they're paying city sales tax, and we're holding them accountable to that, to grant them permission, if they're registered with us, to operate in any city park during the summer season, April through October, in groups of three or less during daylight. That would allow those trucks to adopt those parks, adopt the people who attend those parks and participate in their community in that way. Then to operate in Mineral Palace on Fridays and Sundays at City Park all throughout the season with a max of 25 trucks. We will handle the administration of ensuring there's never more than 25 trucks on site. We know that's all that physically fits. And then to welcome out-of-city trucks to participate on an unregistered, technically non-compliant basis for three special events throughout the year. One of those events is our food truck throwdown, which we were allowed, but it was very experimental this year, where trucks from all across the state are allowed to participate in that event without having to become permanently registered, sales tax compliant, Pueblo businesses. We think that a lot of the people who came to that event then went and pursued their Pueblo City sales tax license, so they could come back to future events. So we think if we had three events a year, it would really help us to recruit other mobile food units, food units to become compliant to serve here more often.
And essentially, what we're asking for there is just to allow a special event tax form for those out-of-town vendors, so they would still be technically compliant, but not have to get licensed in Pueblo before attending the event.
To give them a chance as business owners to say, is this worth my time, energy, and effort to get licensed in the city of Pueblo? And we'll hopefully convince them that it is. So those are kind of our three big asks. The first one, of course, we are asking it's essential for us to be able to continue.
And just to clarify on that one, I mean, the staff at Mineral Palace Park was amazing. It just seems that there are less resources for the staff at that park. And one of the issues is the city has dumpsters at all these parks that we could access and several thousand dollars for a dumpster this year. Really, all we need is access to the drive-in gate at Mineral Palace to access their large dumpster. The only access we had was to a walk-up gate. So to walk 40, 50 bags of trash to the dumpster would just take, you know, hours of our evening that we, we don't have, essentially.
Yeah. So in conclusion, these are the things we'd love to see happen in partnership with City Council, in partnership with Parks and Rec. We're really happy to do whatever that takes or have whatever outside meetings beyond this are required. We're grateful. At the end of the day, that's our main message here, is we're so grateful to the city, to everyone who came out and supported all of these food trucks. We're grateful to the food truck owners who participated in this experiment and who had patience with us as leaders, as we learned and figured out how to make this all happen. And we hope that you all kind of see the vision that we have for the way that food trucks could really help to bridge the gap with our local city parks and food deserts, and also start to create and generate additional closed economy inside Pueblo with local food providers and local food vendors.
And like, just one of the, the key concepts both of us had when we started this event was just to make Pueblo a little more fun, give us something extra to do. And we just kind of are here at your mercy to ask for your help in making Pueblo a better place.
Thanks, Mr. Watts. Thanks, Ms. Ames, for that presentation. What questions are there from Council? Councilor Martinez Ortega?
Thank you, Work Session Chair Martinez. Thank you both for a great presentation. This was very well thought out, very well put together. This was, you know, finding a food truck before the food truck union was almost, you know, I'm not really on Facebook too much, and so finding Puff Puffette Pass like on a Sunday night usually was at the Chamber of Commerce, you know, you just, you kind of had to know stuff like that, or know somebody who knew that. But having a coalition of food trucks together in one place is, is a phenomenal idea. And I, I like that it respects people's personal space and still getting, being able to get together during times of COVID. And being outside is always, is always a plus for our folks in Pueblo. I really appreciate the, the idea, the idea of addressing food deserts, representing District Four, one of the areas in the Y-zone of, like, that is food desert-rich, let's say. This is a great idea to make some of these to-go meals that they can prepare at home in your safe kitchens, serve safe kitchens, and then bring in that to folks who may not have cash for prepared food already. I think that's a great idea. Look into doubling the SNAP dollars for items like that. I'm not sure, I think, but we can talk offline on how to figure that out. But doubling the SNAP dollars, I know is an option in Pueblo, as it's been addressing some of the food deserts for the last, I believe, five years, doubling SNAP dollars through local, locally sourced food vendors, things like that. And, you know, I would really encourage, and I know I spoke to somebody earlier this year, I forget whom exactly at the moment, but I would like to see a mini-food union happen at the Bessemer Ray Aguilera Park. And, you know, we, and having some of those, that special ordinance where having some of those, the, the three food trucks get together, it, for them. It for them to be able to take some of those parks on their own, not just the neighborhood parks, but community parks, um, like Bessemer Park. And think about that as one of your possible locations as there is, there are bathrooms and dumpsters close by.
A lot of requests for that park all throughout the year to the Facebook page. So that's why, what kind of launched our idea of saying we need to stretch this to as many parks as we can.
Yes, absolutely. And, um, even, even as, uh, logistics work themselves out. You know, the convergies, uh, area, there's those Petco. We could try to figure out how Petco can maybe help offset primary jobs for out-of-town food vendors or whatever. Let's get together and, uh, work on developing that special ordinance. The special licensing through with Val and, uh, the legal department for food trucks being able to operate in Pueblo. All of those are great ideas. As somebody who throws like big events together, I do know that there have been, uh, food trucks who do go get that special licensing after that first day. Or, or go get the full-on licensing after the first day because of how successful it was. So they can continue to operate in Pueblo. Let's think about that, uh, equitable decision moving forward too. Thank you all for your presentation and bringing some of those concerns to light.
Other questions?
Hi.
Councilor Mastry?
Thank you. Well, you know, I'd like to see how much it costs you, um, for porta potties and dumpsters. And we have to figure all the costs involved. Because you know, the tax revenue is generated in this city to take care of the needs of the city. Not to make private businesses more profitable. Okay. And so I'd like to see the cost of what that would take compared in comparison to what we get for the revenue in return, because if we're just spending our money back into it, that's not, that's not what the city's set up to do. The city is to set up to take care of the needs of the infrastructure of the city.
Absolutely.
I'd like to see that. I'd like to see the revenue that we get specifically from the food truck union. Between the licensing, the cost of the licensing and the, and the sales tax revenue. And then I'd like to see all the expenses before we make a decision.
So just roughly from our pilot year, um, expenses were 10 to $12,000 for table rental, chair rental, dumpsters, porta potties, hand sink, road closures through work zone. All of, all of these things, the city already owns.
And already pays for.
Road signs, porta potties, dumpsters. There really is no need for that cost to be 10 to $12,000. These are already city resources that are accessible.
Accessible. They're just behind a locked gate that we weren't allowed access to. They're also all city services that were provided to us at City Park.
Well, I know, but that's wear and tear. Do you understand that's wear and tear on your event? Not wear and tear on the city's needs, like for when they have their events.
Which is why we license over 44 different vendors to be added to the city sales tax. And that was about $80,000 in additional city sales tax revenue.
Now we're talking about the cost of, uh, more city employees working the parks. Which you didn't, you didn't pay the, pay for that this year.
And we didn't, we weren't allowed more city employees working the parks either. We're asking for one person.
So we're looking, we're looking at a business going, we don't go into business with businesses. That's what I'm saying.
We're not looking to be a business either.
We're looking to be a community cooperative.
So if we're going to spend our tax revenue, we are to spend it on the needs of the city. And so I'm asking just to look at the numbers.
Yes, we're having to provide them.
All right. Thank you.
Councilor Florid.
I really enjoyed your presentation. I mean, just you've thought about everything. And, uh, you know, the one thing that I would suggest is that there has to be more consistency. My girlfriend and I, uh, we, we always look forward to Sunday at the city park as we were there all summer long. And the one thing that really was a stark difference to me, I'm really picky when I go to restaurants, they got to be clean, was the cleanliness of all these trailers. It, it amazed me because, uh, you're, you're setting an example. I mean, most of those trailers are pristine. And, uh, you know, it, it, it really beat a lot of the, you know, permanent restaurants around town as far as cleanliness. But, uh, my question was, uh, you know, I didn't know what to expect tonight. I, I thought we were going to get into some sort of a contract negotiation, like calling yourselves a union. And I think what you're really, you're more of a cooperative than you are a union.
And honestly, when we came up with that name, it was just to kind of honor Pueblo's union.
Yeah, you're just wanting to get together. And, and by the way, I think the city does have a vested interest in all of you being successful and removing obstacles where we can, making government more efficient. And looking at your types of businesses are different. You're on wheels. And you know, one of the things I wanted to ask our, uh, our attorney is that if you, if you get together 20 food trucks in a, in a, in a function, how do we deal with the revocable permit that's required, uh, you know, when someone is accessing a private, uh, city property? Is, can that be done through a consortium or do, or is, or are they not, are they exempt because they're on a city street basically?
No, they have to get a revocable permit, close the street.
I, I just see that as being really cumbersome. If we know there's going to be a cluster of, of, uh, I, I give you an example because I've, you know, I've lived this life as an insurance broker. And so if you get, if you get 20 trailers and you require each one of them to get a revocable permit, the insurance cost is.
Well, the, the group, the union, the co-op can get the permit, just one permit.
And then each of our individual trucks, we were required to have a policy for an event. So that if something were to happen at that event, it would be essentially 20 insurance policies that could cover that as well.
And the food truck union also, we also carry our own rider that covers all of our events as well.
Policy for the consortium. And then the cost is spread out. So that, that, that makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, it's part of why the road closures became so important to us because we realized we were ensuring the safety of people. And we needed the roads shut down to make sure it could be safe.
Well, anyway, I, I wish you all the luck and, uh, you know, thanks for the presentation. I've learned a lot.
Thank you. Yeah.
Councilor Graham.
I just wanted to thank you guys. What you, what you've done is really cool and just for two citizens to be able to put something like this together and continue it. I, I went down there several times and I talked to a lot of families. The people at the hospital were super pleased to have you guys down there, um, every week. And you did collect sales tax dollars for the city. So, you know, it's my personal opinion that, um, the citizens would not be too upset with helping a $10,000 to $12,000 of sales tax revenue to keep something really cool like this going in Pueblo. Because we are continuously begging for new, great, cool things to come to Pueblo and here you guys are. And so thank you so much for everything you did over the last.
Thank you all. Um, and I, I just want to mention, I do watch a lot of city council meetings. I noticed in June that, um, a noted four to six percent increase in sales tax revenue collection was, was stated. And I just kind of felt like, huh, crazy. That was our busiest month.
And we asked specifically the city sales tax department to provide us with those numbers for the food truck union. But they don't specifically catalog that. So I really would encourage the city sales tax department to have a dashboard for special events and for any events that are going to take place on city property like that. Just because it would help you guys to make those decisions if that dashboard and if those numbers existed to you guys. Available, just available when you needed them.
Yeah. How much is a lot? You know how much the license is? What is the license?
The, for, it's the same as any, any Pueblo business. It's just a business city sales tax license.
50 bucks. Yeah.
I believe that's right. Yeah, 55.
And how many did you guys get licensed?
Forty-four.
Thank you.
And that's both, uh, food trucks and vendors or art vendors, anyone who wanted to be there on a consistent basis. We had license so they didn't have to do the special event forms.
Yeah, I, I completely echo my fellow counselor. I, I think that this is fantastic. I also think that it adds to the city's quality of life. So when you're talking about providing, you know, a necessaries city service, this, the food truck union is a really good example about how that adds to quality of life, health and safety, things like that. So thank you all. I'm, I'm, um, completely supportive of the three ideas that you submitted. I think that they were very tangible. So thank you for being thoughtful about that. In terms of, um, you know, helping build capacity for those 44 food trucks, what would, do you have any ideas or tangible ideas, solutions that would expedite or remove barriers for obtaining the licenses themselves?
Yeah, I repeatedly asked the city sales tax license just for an infographic, an instruction sheet, something I could quickly disseminate to new food truck owners or business owners who wanted to do that. And we talked about sitting down to get that nailed down, but it never really worked. It's something that my company could create for them very easily and very quickly, if I could just understand the basic steps. But that, those basic steps are, um, as far as I can gather from the majority of trucks, so much more complicated than the majority of the other cities. And so they just, they default to other cities where it's easy. And they feel like it's very hard and very difficult to jump through the number of hoops. You do have to be, um, a lot of it has to do with the way the truck is built. That I think the fire suppression systems are a real challenge and some of the sink requirements are a real challenge. That can be solved just by making it clear what a, a mobile food unit in Pueblo requires. Bottom line.
And, and I mean, a lot of that is available currently in the food truck handbook. But it's a pretty, pretty large handbook. And, and I mean, there's a lot of stuff that, um, other communities or just operating in the county wouldn't require.
Councilor Warner.
I'm just going to throw this out there and I might be way off, but do you think the chamber could help you? I mean, they put on a lot of events and I know that their insurance is kind of blanketed on the Chili Fest and also for the barbecue events. I know they mentioned before that you can, uh, um, run under their license. That might save some time. And then also if they just charge a vendor fee, then you're avoiding the whole city.
I mean, that could be good. That is the one thing that definitely concerns me is as I've operated a mobile unit for four years in Pueblo. I've never once participated in the Chili Fest as the vendor fee to participate is completely cost prohibitive to me as a small business owner. Excuse me.
I would suggest, um, maybe have a meeting like that with, with the chamber board and see if that is beneficial.
Yeah, I've, I've spoken with them on multiple occasions. I think the main challenge for a lot of the food truck owners comes in a, in a worldview or perspective there where they believe they would love to commit to events, but that requires a deposit, a down payment of some kind for them to commit to be a part of chamber events, whereas chambers require huge, uh, investments in advance, which is a, a barrier to entry for the majority of the startup food trucks. We serve the startups, established food trucks. They have been around for a long time and can get into the Chili Fest, can become a part of the chamber. And they all mostly go in that direction. But we're serving the real true startups who didn't know how to work in the city first and foremost. So we'd love to bridge some of those gaps if we had more time, because we weren't trying to pay for dumpsters and figure out all this, how to close a road. We would do that for sure.
Sure. Yeah. I mean, it seems like for an event like your slam down, is that what you called it? Slam down truck?
Yeah, the, the food truck throwdown. Yeah.
Seems like the chamber could definitely help you with that in some way. Yeah. Okay, that's all.
All right. Well, we will definitely follow up on the three, um, recommendations from you all. Thank you so much, Mr. Watts and Ms. Ames.
Thanks for having us.
Councilor Warner.
Um, and I think all, um, Regina was asking for was a line item report. If you could just email that to us.
Okay, absolutely.
Thanks.
Next on our agenda, uh, given that Pueblo Housing Authority has moved to January is West Gate project update. So can I have Mr. Bade to the podium, please?
Hi there. Well, thank you, um, council for letting me just kind of give you an update of where we're at with the West Gate area. One of the things that we've been involved in, I know, uh, city council, uh, Mr. Flores is well aware of what we're doing there and I really appreciate all of his assistance, but, uh, wanted to, uh, just kind of give you an update of where we're at. With some of the projects that are going on, I know at, uh, Chavez Ward to Preparatory Academy, but in that general area. Somehow I've become the pipe piper for the West Gate area. I think it kind of stems back and Dennis will remember this, when we went through school closures, a lady by the name of Rose Cruz or Mrs. Cruz was the kind of a, the matriarch of that area. And I happen to know her family real well, and I think she's probably from heaven just saying, hey, Jack, you need to be doing this. But I just wanted to provide you a little bit of update of some of those things that we're doing, some of the challenges that we have. And maybe just, you know, just a little bit of an insight. And so first of all, with the West Gate extension, I want to thank, uh, the mayor. Mayor Gradishar met with us last week with the public development folks. We're trying to work through a few things there. And I know, uh, Mr. Andrew Hayes is here and he's doing, uh, trying to help us as well. We're, uh, working our way through getting 18th Street, uh, started for us and getting it done. I think the frustration that we've all had is just, you know, the, the length of time it's taken to be able to do that. We're concerned simply because this originally started as a safety, um, access to the school, uh, for first responders. And, uh, the secondary one was really getting the development of the housing so we could get, uh, kids in the school. But I want to give you a kind of a, and then the second thing, you know, we, the Raze Grant, um, we really appreciate that. We want to thank the, the mayor and his efforts and even, uh, you know, the governor, because, uh, for, you know, 16, 8.8 million dollars or Raze Grant to be able to focus on the West Gate area is really, really fun to see, especially in my lifetime. I haven't been a developer and a builder in the city and watching things kind of roll out. Another thing, just in a quick update, one of the things that we just submitted, uh, was a CDOT grant for safe sidewalks. The grant is about $380,000 and it's for sidewalks along 18th Street. We're trying to work out a process where once the street gets built, uh, we can put the sidewalks in and then hold the builders responsible for an area of the sidewalk to replace it or replace the entire sidewalk should they screw it up. Um, and being a former builder, it can be done. I did it in Carver Springs, did it in Fort Collins and also did it up in Frederick. So it's something that I have done in the past and I look forward to see if we can actually do that because at Chippa, uh, Chavez Ward to Preparatory Academy, otherwise known as Chippa, we have a number of students and I would venture to say it's about 50 students that actually, uh, navigate that area from, uh, on the, uh, west side of the school. Some of them actually come from the east side of the school and north of the school. So we're really looking forward to two developments, looking forward to getting that road done and also getting, uh, Pike's Peak, uh, Park community getting that rolling as well. We're real excited about the fire department actually, uh, getting an opportunity to come over here at some point in time. Because I said, uh, previously, uh, we didn't get a chance to come in 2022, but my, uh, colleagues and I, we were able to come in 2020 and 2021, uh, a number of times. But, you know, the real thing there is about safety for the students and getting first responders. I don't think a lot of folks are well aware that, uh, you know, and last year, uh, we had about 90% of our middle school students were educated in a modular building. This year and for really for about another, uh, year to 18 months, our high school students are in there because we're in the process of building a new, uh, remodeling the high school and adding 18 or 24 classrooms and then also adding a new building. The 22nd Street upgrades, and I know I haven't had a chance to talk to, uh, uh, Andrew Hayes a little bit about this, but, uh, we are making progress. We're, we're hoping to finish the engineering design and all this stuff. We also did submit as part of our grant, uh, for CDOT sidewalks there as well. And one of my sidewalks for curb and gutter, uh, we would love to be able to have curb and gutter on both sides of the street. That's really what we submitted for. The nice part about it is we'll find out in, uh, early January if we're one of the, uh, folks, I've already had my, um, session with the folks, uh, from CDOT to talk a little bit about what we're doing and how, uh, how we came about the costs and a few other things. And so, um, she was really excited that I had a former builder background of how we came up with the, the amounts and what, what we did. And it was kind of interesting. And even in that process, I mean, as we all get to, you know, more and more, um, technology, the stuff of trying to navigate how to, how to actually put, uh, all of your projects on Google Maps was really an adventure. But fortunately I have a, a 14-year-old granddaughter and a 10-year-old grandson that helps you be able to get that done. But we're hoping to start, uh, Andrew, we're hoping to actually start that progress, that process in the first quarter of 2023 and get it done as, as soon as we can. With the ARPA stuff, I mean, uh, one of the things that we'd like to get is really of an update of what, where we're at with, uh, you know, the progress of sewer and water along between 11th and 22nd Street. We're just really kind of curious of what, what, uh, that, where we're at at that point in time. And I'll, I'll get an opportunity. I'll visit with, uh, the mayor and Andrew as well. But I just wanted to share that with you. One of the neat things is just want to bring you up to speed where we're at with our new project. We will break ground hopefully in January. We'll probably break ground before then, but I'm, I'm in the process right now. If you, if you're familiar with the school, we have a tenplex that we had where our, uh, high school students, that tenplex is disappearing. In about two weeks, um, we had another modular was our transportation building. It's disappearing as well. We've actually figured out a way, a creative way not to spend a dime to be able to get it done. Because removing a tenplexes I found is about a $350,000 ordeal and that's just to remove it. So we're in the process of getting that taken care of and that'll remove some of the barriers for us to be able to start the school. But we're real excited about, we, we're gonna, uh, we'll be sending out invitations and stuff and getting it ready in the month of December to have another groundbreaking event. We'll probably be indoors like we did before because January will maybe not be the best month to plan something outside. But, uh, we're excited about that because it's a $35 million cash best grant. And for folks that don't know what a cash, uh, best grant is, is for building excellent schools today. It's a, a program that exists through Colorado Department of Education. That's a wonderful program. It allows, you know, this school at Sunset Park is being built that way. Ben Franklin. Our, you know, remodel of our high school is going to be that way. So it's a, it's a wonderful opportunity. Now ours is a little bit different because it's not a COP grant process. I mean, when we get done at the end of five years, that's basically a building that exists and for the benefit of Chavez's where the Preparatory Academy. We had an opportunity at Chippa to contribute $5 million for that, that program. And so we're, we're excited about it, but I think anytime I can get a $35 million building for a $5 million investment, I'm in. Another thing that's really kind of excited, I was a little disappointed that we had a little bit of a setback, but I was anticipating anyway, we're, we're trying to, we're in the process of still working our way through a planned athletic physical wellness facility area. And part of this is driven by the needs of the community to provide an area where we can have folks come and walk and get some exercise. As you, if you've been on the south, I live on the south side, lived in El Camino since 1981. And what, what I used to do and I still do, I'll go down, I go now, go down with the grandkids and let them run around the track. I just got to watch them. But you know, a lot of folks will be out in the evening, especially during the summers, they're using the track as just kind of an exercise area. Something we're excited about trying to do as well, we have a grant in place already for the wellness side of it, where we'll have 10 stations that'll actually go around the football field. And you know, if you've been to a small community college, you'd be, you're, you're familiar with those. They have little exercise areas all around. They really want to include people into the campus. I mean, that's the main ingredient, especially at the college level. And it's kind of something we're looking to do as well. But we're going to resubmit, we submitted in July 2001 and May with the NFL in 2001. And I've got now have to go back with the Daniels and GoCo and resubmit due to the timeline that it involved. And part of that was due to COVID. I mean, COVID kind of set this aside and it's okay. I mean, we're, we're still, we didn't get kicked out of the process. By the means, we just got asked to provide them some updated information. And so we're working on that. Another fun thing that we're working on, and I think Councilman Flores will appreciate this too, we're working on another USDA grant. And it's kind of a combination USDA grant, but it's also some other stuff that will serve as a possible for future farmers, a future farmer program and a future dairy farm program. Because there used to be 11 dairies over on that side of, of the city. And so we're, we're working our way through that. I've submitted the area interest stuff. We've got to, now we had to give them a, a design of what it looked like. We had to make out an arrangement where we could actually house 10 cows and you know, have those cows be able to where we could have a safe place where our kids can navigate over there. So I'm working through that part of it right now. I think we have an area for the 10 cows. We're just not sure if the person to the north of us, Jim Pennell and his wife are, are they, I think they may have some interest early, but we just got to work to delete legal stuff, the insurance stuff and kind of the other co-op stuff. So we're working our way through that. But it'll also service some CT areas. And you know, one of the things that I know coming from the construction industry that kept me out of the industry, had an investment firm after I'd retired, come back to me and say, Jack, we want you to start a, a new building operation in Southern Colorado. I turned around and told him after a year and says, you know, you're not capable of doing it. And the reason being is because we don't have enough trades. We don't have enough skilled trades that really actually understand, you know, the nuances of production building, understanding how to build one or two, but when you build 100 at a time or 20 a week, that's, you know, it's a little bit different sophistication. And so we're looking, looking forward to that. And then also the last component will be what we call a P tech component. The professional services cyber, I think it's called cyber tech or something like that, robotics and not necessarily robotics, but also robotics to clean things and things like that. So we're looking, looking forward to see what, what capabilities we have. But what's exciting about is it's a $45 million grant. And so we're working our way through that with the folks over at Chavez's where it's kind of interesting and just kind of share with you a little bit about where we've come from. I know some of you hadn't had an opportunity to meet Ms. Graham, Mr. Ottega. And I think Ms. Martinez, I don't know if you were, I don't think I've got an opportunity to visit with you in the past, but I have got an opportunity to visit with Mrs. Graham and Ms. Graham. And so we're in the process, but I want to share with you kind of what we've done. We opened our building that we have right now. So our middle school kids are quietly in their own building by themselves. And it's really kind of interesting phenomenon that occur is occurring right now, which I thought would occur due to the empirical data is less issues that we have with our middle school students over the first semester, which is amazing to me. And you know, I've always read that it was going to reduce the problems that you have, the behavioral problems, reduce some of the stuff that happens in modulars because you're in separate buildings. And I'm very hap- happy to say that yes, it is. It's, I had a report from my security folks over there at Chippa and things are actually a little bit more quiet, which they were over the last couple of years. And so we're excited about, you know, trying to keep them in, in that building for the next 18 months. And then at the end of the 18 month process, we're going to have a major shift where we put the, at least planned right now anyways, putting the elementary school in that building, that permanent building. We're going to move the middle school over to their new building and the high school will move to their new building. We have a request for the best grants part of our grant. We have to remove all of the modulars that are for educational space. And so I'm, I'm really looking forward to that. That will be my funnest day, Councilman Flores, that I'm going to go out and celebrate. You know, I'd even love to ask the fire department, we can celebrate with a little bonfire, but that'll be something else we'll, we might look at later on down the road. But overall, just wanted to share with you that, you know, the Chavez's where it is committing. And we've done this on purpose. We know, we've looked at some stuff, what's happening on the west side. We realized that the west side is changing. And we want to, you know, give a commitment to making sure we give a 21st century education for our students in that area. And there's another thing that I think kind of very interesting for, for Chip is most people don't realize that we actually transport students. We had a couple of families that moved in, one from Oklahoma and one from Florida. And they didn't realize and we actually, you know, we'll actually go to Pueblo West for T students. Most people don't realize that. We figured out a way to get it done. And that's what's kind of nice with some of the stuff to do. But one of the other things that will be really nice over there is it, right now, we have a capacity for about maybe 1,075 students. Last year we were approaching it, we were at 1,022. We had some leadership change that caused a little bit of consternation this last year. And that right now we're hovering right around 1,000. But we anticipate as we continue to build homes in that area and stuff like, especially if we get, you know, some apartments and some other multi facility stuff, that will increase. And so we're looking forward to that. But when we get all said and done, what we'll end up with is a capacity for about 1,800 students. I think it actually be a little bit more, but if, the way that I had to look at this when I was talking to the, the insurance folks is most of our high school students, if not half of our high school students actually go to PCC and to CSU Pueblo. And so when you look at the capacity of our, of our high school, if we build a school that's got 600, you know, the capacity actually to me, it means I can actually educate another 200 because 200 or half of them are gone. But I guess, you know, and looking at, so what we're anticipating is that we'll be able to go up to at least 1,800, if not 2,000 students. For which that area would be awesome. Because as it continues to grow, we can actually become the old days when I grew up. And a few of us older ones, folks grew up in community schools. We had to go to an area, a community school in our area. We didn't have schools of choice. But I, I think you're well aware of, you know, I just want to share with you kind of public developments. I had an opportunity and I talked to those folks usually almost every week. And trying to be an advocate for them, helping to get them started and getting them rolling. We're working with Andrew Hayes and his department, working through some of the stuff. We're now in the process of actually doing a little bit of soils testing for soils in the, in the, in the general area to see if we can lower the cost of, of dirt that's in that area. And that's what we're going to work on for the month of December. We'll hope to get back to the planning or planning and zoning and that Public Works back in January. You know, and they're looking at building in that total area just themselves without lifestyle development, 240 homes. With the two combined group, they're actually looking at doing about almost, depending on the, on the multifamily, another 200. So we end up with about 440 homes. Cause we're also, we've had an opportunity and I'm fortunate because of my background in the construction industry, not only in, in Pueblo, but the regional area, but also the national level. We've been discussing a couple of projects with the rent to own folks. Very, very, you know, Pueblo has very high level of rental. But we want to do it in the right way where it can actually become a rental to a buy. And there are programs that exist, I'm well aware of it because I did it up in Brighton. In the early, I think it was back in 2002, 2003, 2004, had an opportunity to do it in Brighton. It was very successful. So we're looking forward to trying to getting that done. But you know, I just want to share with you that's a $109 million investment. Just by the developers and stuff, you know, of being over there, total, total west side capital. We, you know, once it kind of gets all rolled out between Pike's Peak Park and, and the, what, what we actually call the West Gate area, which is ending below 24th Street down. About $270 million total investment in that area. And so we're, we're excited about 24th Street rolling along. We're excited about the new jail and all the opportunities that exist in that area. I won't highlight too much on Pike's Peak Park because you're well aware of, you know, that's rolling down the road. But in this, this was actually a presentation we made jointly with Ashley and in her group. You know, I think way back in late 2000 or 2021. So I won't share too much about that. But there's some additional maps for those of you that, you know, that I didn't get a chance to talk to before, you kind of show the general areas of what we had planned on doing. Some of the progress that we're making. And really, one of the things that I'm excited about, and you know, there's a couple of real small projects that we did. During COVID, my boss was really extremely surprised that I was, I don't know if I was smart enough or what it was, but I'm not one to sit down and, you know, just do nothing for the length of period of time. So I was out building two softball fields, a base, a short baseball field. I know the baseball players give you a bad tire. He said, it's only 300 feet. I said, man, if you can hit over 300 foot fence, then I might think about extending the fence. But we were able to put together a state of the art baseball field and softball field in that area. And we're hopefully, if we can kind of get some stuff straightened out, we're looking at tolling some mini tournaments over there, a few things that will benefit that area. We look forward to having the food trucks over there too. I mean, hopefully we can get them over there in our area. Because when I get to go to lunch, I got an opportunity. I said, do I go north? Do I go south? I do a loaf and jug. A loaf and jug option is not very healthy, to be honest with you. But we're able to, you know, to get that, that completed and done. We're also working with the church right now of trying to purchase a little bit more land from the church. So we can use that land and not have to put our transportation maintenance center right in the middle of our campus. We're going to try to move it back over there. It's a little out of, out of sight, out of mind. And so we're working our process through to be able to get that completed in this, in this next school year as well. Couple of changes I want to share with you. I've changed my role with Chavez's where the Preparatory Academy. I'm still there. As I shared privately with Council Floris, Councilman Floris, there was a reason why, but my heart has always been there. And I know there's a divine reason that I've actually came there. If you really look at my history of not going from Hyde Park to building in that area to know all of a sudden being, you know, being the former chief business officer, to also be a representative of that area. But I am working with Chavez's where as their kind of their project grants person, coordinating all of our efforts to get all of our, what I call the non-educational grants and stuff. And I'm also chasing a few more grants. But we're excited about, you know, what's happening in our west side area. The one thing that I think is really kind of interesting when we go over there is really in my lifetime of knowing what the west side has come from. And I'm one of those ones as a 19 year old freshman was out changing tires at dairy. I remember the old dairy. I remember the things over in that area. And I remember the people. I remember the people, very hearty people, don't really ask for a lot. Will not ask you for, you know, they don't need help. They're, they'll honor their own stuff. But one of the things I'm very helpful to be able to help that group and bring some stuff to them because it's beginning to change that entire environment over in that area. And once again, we want to thank you, you know, thank, thank the mayor for his support. We look forward to, to learning some more about the Raze Grant, what that is all about, what it can actually help fund. Cause one of the needs that I've learned that, you know, I, I know that the grant, Raze Grant will take care of the, the busing side of it. As I said real early, I didn't realize that we didn't have any, any public transportation in that area. And so I'm very excited about that coming forth. As I said before, I'd love to have the, the food trucks. So I'd be able to, you know, create an area where they can come over and I can eat, actually eat a little bit healthier than I do. But the other stuff that, you know, we, we're happy, you know, about is that fire department, if we really get that. Cause one of the things that will help with this axis of just have an 18th street is our response time will go from approximately 25 minutes to about seven minutes, because we'll go from a different area to being, being able to come off of right there by the golf course. I had an opportunity to talk to Chris Riley long before he retired. And really, I really didn't think it took that long, but I've driven that area and it does take that long. But the scary thing for me is if, you know, fire ever did occur in that modular complex, forget about putting the fire out. I mean, it's going to be done by the time you get there. So we're anxious about that. But we're also, I'm real thankful that in my lifetime, we'll actually get to see some of this come to fruition. So thank you again. Any questions you may have?
Thank you, Mr. Bay. What questions are there from Council? Councilor Floris?
Jack, how much have you invested in, in the school in the last two or three years with $40 million? And I was just looking, you know, most people will, we have a little button here where we could type in a name. Believe it or not, we started talking about the 18th street extension. Our first meeting was March 4th of 2020. So in about four or five more months, we'll have been talking about a two block area. I think your mistake was getting me involved.
Well, you know, I think, you know, one of the things that none of us really, and I appreciate that, but none of us really anticipated what COVID was really going to do to a lot of the stuff. And so we're still excited about it. You know, we haven't got to show.
Tell me, when, when is the first shovel going to be?
We're, we're anticipating that I believe on December 12th is City Council will actually award the project to the selected or proposed selected vendor. We're in the process of trying to figure out the dirt, but we're hoping that they'll start sometime in early February or mid February to, to first part of January or first part of March. But we're really hoping, you know, one of the things that at least the, the proposed vendor I know very well. And I know they're not really going to take an extended period of time to get that road in. So we're hoping by, you know, the end of April, at least in by the end of the school year, that's actually ready to go. Because that'll be very helpful as we change some of our navigation routes, you know, for the summer of how we can transport students, you know, as, as most people don't realize that this is going to be a write off. I mean, if you're, if you're headed north, you're going to go right in. But the nice part is, and one of the other things that we'd really love to be able to get, and I know there's, you know, there's some obstacles to this. But if we could get Spalding to extend all the way down to 22nd would be wonderful. But I know that they're, you know, with the Pike's Peak Parks stuff, it's going to actually extend from 31st down to 24th Street, which will help us a bunch as well.
Yeah, I don't think people realize that there was no entrance on Pueblo Boulevard to get to the school. And it also closed off the opportunity of students from Pueblo West coming in now.
Yes.
It's going to be possible with the extension and then with the, the new road going in.
Yeah, we, it's interesting as people migrate, you know, to this, to the city. And we've had a number of folks, you know, our, our school's always been in transition, you know, we have people leave, people come. But it's been interesting. We've had an awful lot of folks that have come from, you know, like I said, Oklahoma, we have some folks come from Arizona, from Texas. And they desire to live in Pueblo West, but they're looking for that charter school stuff in there, you know, Swallows obviously is there. But ours, ours is a little bit different atmosphere, as you know, it's more of a kind of a, as a family thing. And so we look at it a little bit different. But we're excited about that opportunity too. And believe me, I'm really excited about it because as a referee, when I have to go do a Pueblo West, which I, you know, now the season, basketball season is getting started. I don't have to go all the way up to, you know, Highway 50 and wait 20 minutes to get all the way over to McCullough and all the way back down to high school. I just go right across Joel Martinez. Thank you, Jack. Thank you.
Other questions, comments? No, thank you so much, Mr. Bay.
Have a happy holidays too.
You as well. Our next presentation then is going to be from House Bill 1451. So can I have Mr. Patello and Ms. Garcia to the podium, please? And this is specifically for the ARPA proposal. Also, there's a concert happening tonight. That's what all the noise is. The Air Force. Yeah. Ms. Garcia and Mr. Patello, whenever you're ready.
Good evening. Thank you all for have putting us on the agenda. I think the mayor's office for kind of, I don't want to say fast tracking it, but in a way, yes. And I just, yeah, what the handout there you have is just, I'm not going to read bullet points to you because I find that very condescending when people do that to me. But it's just, it'll provide kind of a Cliff's Notes version of what the House Bill 1451 collaborative management program is. For those of you that who aren't familiar with what we are, we are, what we do. And then how it kind of ties in with our ask requesting ARPA funds. And so just a real kind of crash course version, back in the late 90s, early 2000s, the Colorado legislature came to realize that there were families with youth that were involved in multiple systems that were getting pulled in 20 different directions. So they had a bit of trouble at school. So their school was telling them one thing. They were on probation. The probation officer was telling them another thing. They were, their mental health therapist was telling them a third thing. Their child welfare caseworker was telling them another thing. There was a lot of this kind of silo mentality going on and these systems were not talking to each other. So in 2004, the legislature passed this House Bill 1451 law that was signed into, into law in 2004, created what's called the Collaborative Management Program or the CMP. There's acronyms everywhere, wherever you go. And so what CMP is, it's on a county by county basis for any county in Colorado who wants to And so, um, what CMP is, it's on a county by county basis for any county in Colorado who wants to participate. You could focus your efforts on one of four emphasis areas. So child welfare, those are your, your kiddos who have, um, involvement with Department of Human Services. They have a child welfare caseworker, uh, behavioral health, those are your students that are, or your youth, I should say, that are getting, uh, therapy services through Health Solutions, a private practice therapist, what have you. Juvenile justice is another emphasis area. Those are your court involved, uh, youth. Ankle bracelets, probation cases, detention cases, things like that, and then education. So education, of course, would be anybody suffering from what we term educational disengagement. So these are your truancy court students, your students who are having school attendance issues that are kind of on the verge of truancy court. They're getting a lot of referrals to the office for behavioral problems, things like that. So it's up to every county that joins the collaborative management program to decide what emphasis area to focus on. So Pueblo County has been on board with the program, uh, since two thousand and seven. So we're entering our sixteenth calendar year, basically of the program. And, uh, this is before us, um, but the Pueblo County stakeholders at that time in oh seven, when they came on board with the program, made the decision to focus on education. That's in Pueblo. That's kind of where the gap in communication was. The school districts, for better or for worse, had a reputation of not playing well with other systems. Kind of that, that silo mentality, you know, the way education is set up, it's, it's kind of its own little kingdom. So that's why myself, Michelle, my assistant coordinator and our another, our other staff, we are a staff of three. We're housed with, uh, School District sixty. We work with anybody countywide who is multi-system involved and has youth between birth and age twenty one. So we do work with families on the, their kiddos are on the kind of the younger age group that are not in school yet. They're kind of toddler age. And then the opposite end of the spectrum, we also will work with occasionally kind of your eighteen, nineteen, twenty year old young adults who are on their own. But they're still within that legislative age group. But for the most part, the lion's share, about eighty five percent of the families we work with are that K twelve age group. So that's why we're how, like I said, we're housed with District sixty. The majority of the youth that we serve are D sixty kids, but like I said, we work with seventy, we work with all the, um, church-based schools, the online programs, home schooled kids. We just happen to be housed with sixty because that's the largest school district and that's kind of where most of the need is. Um, like I said, their focus is typically students who have that educational disengagement piece. Our mission statement aligns with the legislative goals of the House Bill fourteen fifty one law, which are kind of enabling families to access more effective services. It'll reduce duplication of services so that a family is not being told the same thing, you know, ten different meetings. Um, eliminate fragmentation, kind which leads to better outcomes and cost sharing. We, that's a big piece too, that we always encourage cost sharing. So we do have some flexible funds built into our budget, um, to help with what we call simple economic barriers to success. So for example, what that can look like is the reason a student is always truant or absent from school is because the mom's car is broken down. Depending on how much it is, we could either pay the entire thing or a huge piece of it to get it fixed. We do have those flex funds built in. Um, if the reason the student is struggling academically is there's no lights on in the house, we can help get the lights turned back on. So we can kind of get creative with those flex funds. We're not, uh, another kind of beauty part of the program is that we don't have to uh, spend it by June thirtieth or you lose it situation. We can bank and roll over from year to year with those collaborative management funds. At the state level, we're under the umbrella of the Colorado Department of Human Services, CDHS, their Office of Child Welfare. And so how the program is funded, and this is written into the state law as well, is with civil court fees. We, we, we phrase them divorce fees, but it's actually any civil court fees that, that are paid in the state of Colorado go into this fund. And then we have to hit certain benchmarks every year. Um, and it's literally a mathematical formula that CDHS plugs in with the size of your county and the number you served and, um, performance measures that you hit. And then that determines our payout. So we report, and this is written in the law as well, to a ten, there are ten mandated partners who comprise what's called an IOG, an inter-agency oversight group. That's who we report to. And that's, so in Pueblo, it's the Pueblo IOG or the POG Board. And on, on the handout there, it's, it's got all the, the mandated partners. So you have the Pueblo County DHS, uh, District Courts and Probation for the Tenth Judicial here in Pueblo. Health Department, School District sixty, Health Solutions, DYS, Signal Behavioral Health, the YWCA, Crossroads Turning Points and Catholic Charities. So those are the, the, those are the members of the POG Board. So they oversee our operational and programmatic, um, what we do with our program. How we provide services to youth is through the FST, the Family Support Team. So what an FST is, it's a multi-agency staffing that's family driven. So the family does most of the speaking at that meeting. So we get our referrals from the school, usually from the school district. Uh, one of us will conduct an intake interview with the, the family to kind of get their permission, get their buy-in. It's a voluntary program. So families do, even, even if it's directed like through truancy court, for example, it, it is not court ordered. It's not mandated. Families always have the option. Families are controlled every step of the way. If they tell us, no, I don't want to work with you guys. Okay. No harm, no foul. But here's what we can help you with type of thing. And so what an FST, uh, is effective at doing is bringing everybody to the table. And we've been pretty effective at encouraging cost sharing, even though we do have flex funds built in, we want to be kind of the payer of last resort. So we utilize, Michelle's been great with this. She's been the, the, our liaison with, uh, the DHS caseworkers. So if the youth has an, an active DHS case, Pueblo County DHS should be the payer of first resort to help with some of those costs that, that I was telling you we can do with our flex funds. And then we're there kind of the bottom of that safety net to prevent a family from totally hitting the ground. So how that ties in with what we do as far as like homeless youth, for those of you that are familiar with the school district language for that, uh, if any students or families are flagged with that McKinney Vento designation, so if they're flagged McKinney Vento through the schools, um, that's a federal program that, uh, for homeless students and families so that they can enroll without a permanent residence, things like that. For those of you that are familiar with the McKinney Vento law. And so in September of twenty twenty one, so a year ago, a little over a year ago, District sixty approached us, we're housed within them, so they, they, they're very familiar with our program. And they got this, it's an, it's actual an ARP grant as well, an American Rescue Plan, um, specifically for homeless children and youth. And so they wanted to partner with us. So from September until the present day, we've collaborated with them. We were able, and it's on your printout, last, uh, school year, to spend over fifty five thousand dollars to assist basically forty families, thirty nine families in accessing housing. So we were using that grant money for either temporary, uh, housing. So if you had a family who's living in their car, they're doubled or tripled up with family and families ready to kick them out. We could put them in a hotel for one or two weeks, up to a month with that grant. We also were able to, and this was the huge help, Michelle, um, to help them with their deposit and first month's rent. If any of you all in the room here have moved in the past several years, you know, those initial moving costs are very daunting, even if you're employed full time. You know, that's a big order to come up with first month's rent, security deposit. So it was out of reach. A lot of these families, so that grant was monumental in helping us help families. But at the beginning of this year, District sixty, and this is through no fault of them, they, they were, you know, caught unawares as well. They were notified by the grantors of that ARP grant, the federal government, that, um, that grant could no longer be used for permanent housing. So we couldn't, so that, all we could use the grant for now is a couple of weeks at a hotel, what they term temporary housing. Um, and car repair, yeah, anything tied with transporting the kids to school. So no more utility bill help with that D sixty grant and no more permanent housing. And you would say that the permanent housing is where we get our biggest bang for the buck, right?
Yeah. So a lot of it, when we, when we pull, um, these meetings together, what? There we go. Thank you. When we pull these meetings together, what we say is we're trying to get everybody in the sandbox and getting everybody to work together. So a lot of the things that we run into, um, is children, especially after COVID, they fell off the map. So they're unenrolled. They haven't been in school for a year or two, and we have to get them back engaged. But not only engage, we have to, can, have to help them continue to go to school because a lot of them are so far behind that then they don't want to go or they feel that they can't keep up, that they're left out. What we do is I always say, we don't find housing. I can't tell them where to go. I can't tell them where they will be successful at that. Or what will fit for them, what side of town, what they feel comfortable in, where they can go. However, I can always point them in the right direction. Anytime I get anything, I'll tell them, here you go. We have a lot of them that have been kicked out and that have, um, evictions on their record. So we try to help them find private landlords that will not use that eviction against them. So coming up with the first month's rent and the deposit is usually about twenty five hundred plus to help them. And a lot of these families don't have that. They also have back utility bills. So if they are on any type of government assisted housing, they cannot have any back utility bills in their name. They have to be able to put utilities in their name. So Black Hills is the big one. Um, usually water will work with us and then Excel's another one that we help with. Black Hills is usually the biggest chunk that we spend thousands.
And Michelle's been great with color. So the word collaborative is in the name of our program. So she's been, uh, collaborating with Posada as well to, uh, they have those Alco units over on Lake, uh, so if you've never toured that facility, it's a really cool, uh, setup they have out there. And so we, she's been great with getting, being able to utilize that as a resource as well. Again, so kind of, we are the payer of last resort. We, we kind of help the families exhaust every available resource out there. But a lot of times there are no resources out there. We kind of are it. And so it was actually District sixty that connected me with, uh, you know, Mayor Gradisar's office and the city through the, the availability of maybe possibly ARPA funding. So I read the, the application, um, it, it seemed to fit in several of the pillars and that's part of the handout as well. And so, um, our ask is, yeah, twenty five thousand dollars that would help make up some of that gap that with the D sixty grant no longer available to be used for permanent housing, if that makes sense. So yeah, in a kind of a nutshell, that's.
And another big thing is we don't just give out the money. It's not just something that somebody comes to us and says, hey, we need this money. We make sure that they're educationally engaged. We try to help with the, with the educational levels, any type of testing. We try to work with them on any type of attendance. If they're in truancy court, our ultimate goal is to get them out of truancy court so that they can be attending. If they're in municipal court, we try to get everybody working together so that they aren't using that as an excuse to miss school. So we do have some kids that haven't been in school for years that we are helping work with, getting them stable, finding them appropriate house. A lot of them end up do going into the child welfare system and we don't drop off on that because we are more of that school engaged piece. So we can watch the attendance, we can watch the behaviors, and then we can notify the, the proper people. We also help with any type of mental health services, helping them with the enrollment process. Where do you call? How do we get you involved? Is there a school-based therapist? Do you need the medication evaluations? What do you need as far as that, which is a big thing. We also work with mentors to help work with them to get that educational piece back.
Yeah. Partnership is the name of the game. Yes. You mentioned mentoring. We, for the past five years, we've had an MOU contract in place with United Way. Uh, they have a part-time staff member and we kind of supplement them with, uh, additional monies to kind of make that position full-time to run what we call the Pueblo Mentoring Collaborative. And this is a kind of, it's not a mentoring group per se, it's just kind of a collaborative group and we pulled a monthly meeting. I know a couple of you all actually have attended our last mentoring celebration dinner. And so it's kind of that making things more efficient, making things more effective as far as accessing youth services. Michelle, tomorrow, she's partnering with PCC. They're having an event tomorrow to give haircuts, free haircuts and nail appointments for any moms or girls or boys that wanted to get their nails worked on as well. And that's going on tomorrow. You're going to have about a hundred kids.
Yeah, I'm going to have a hundred kids, um, with the elementary schools and then east and central who are going to come through. So it'll be parents, grandparents as well. So we have some kids that parents have been cutting their hair or their only option is for the first um, day of school kind of thing. So we kind of wanted to get that. So it's sustain a self-care day. Exciting name there.
So yeah, back tying it back to what the ARPA and our request, that's that money, that money would, uh, help kind of enable us to continue to help with permanent housing costs. The deposits in the first month's rent.
Thank you, Mr. Patel and Ms. Garcia. What questions are there from council, Councilor Flores?
Uh, your request is very modest for what you're trying to accomplish and you definitely have my support. Here's my question, uh, you know, School District sixty is basically, uh, as I've asked you for your assistance. And as you know, the way that funding is done in the state of Colorado, the money follows the child. Are you receiving any money from districts? I know that you've got a probably a free office space.
Yeah, that, that's pretty much the extent, uh, we.
And they, they also, uh, got a, a chunk of ARPA money too. We're not the only ones. I'm surprised that they're not more financially engaged. Uh, they, they should be, uh, you know, they should be providing the money that they're getting for these thirty nine students to you. And I'm, I'm wondering if you've had that discussion or is it too touchy of a subject?
Well, we've been collaborating with their, um, Office of Federal Programs. It's a team of three over there and they report, you know, to this. You all know, uh, you know, for bureaucracy, a school district is kind of second to none, very top heavy and layers and layers upon layers. And so to answer your question, no, we, uh, they, they've never brought that up. They, they were trying, like I said, they're the ones that connected us, uh, you know, as a, with the city ARPA funding as a potential source. Cause they, they were disappointed as well, be, being told by the federal government that they could, that, that couldn't be used. They were in the same boat as us. They were very apologetic and they did not like that fact at all, but their hands are tied on their end. Um, they were trying to brainstorm with us to find ways to utilize our program as kind of, because how it is, how it is now with the grant is we itemize every, every youth that we spend their grant money on. We invoice, we pay it upfront and then Pueblo County DHS is our fiscal agent. And then DHS invoices, uh, D sixty every month and then gets reimbursed out of, out of their grant. So there, one of this D sixty's ideas was how about if we have, um, utilize House Bill fourteen fifty one collaborative management as kind of housing consultants or some similar terminology? And then they would just give us, what was it, seventy five hundred a month for the rest of the school year to try and noodle, to try and, you know, use up that grant. Um, but the county attorney, uh, will find out tomorrow. Our, our board meets tomorrow, um, but the initial feedback we're getting because our board chair is the, is from Pueblo County DHS and their.
Did District sixty tell you that they, you didn't qualify for ARPA money through them?
No, it was just, it was a change in the requirement. So originally they said that we could use it for this. And then the state and federal funding came back and said, no, you just have to do temporary housing. And when the temporary housing, it is up to a two week stay at a motel and that's it.
But aside from brainstorming yet, so they, they never really explicitly said.
It was the grand administrator.
The ARPA treasury rules are the same for everybody. I mean, there's, you know, so for them to send you to us and then now give, being able to do, and I'm not saying we, we don't want to participate, but you would think they would be, uh, participating a lot more financially.
Yeah. And one thing I will say too, is if this is a fund is, is approved through you all, the twenty five thousand, it wouldn't be limited to D sixty. It would be broader than that.
That's one of the big pieces is that with this funding, it was only D sixty students. So we couldn't help D seventy, we couldn't help.
Hope online.
Hope online. Or if they were initially homeless, trying to get enrolled into a school, we weren't able to spend the fu, those funds. They had to be enrolled in D sixty. So they have to be an active enrolled student in D sixty for us to use those funds. So that did limit us on being able to help everybody.
I was on the school district board and I can tell you right now, the three students was the equivalent of thirty thousand dollars. It's at least ten thousand a child that's given by the state to the, you know, to the school district. So I, I'm off on a tangent here. I'll stay focused.
The point well taken.
Thank you for the presentation, but, uh, you have my support.
Other questions? Counselor Graham?
Um, how many of the households have more than one student in it that you guys?
Almost every family.
Yeah, about sixty to seventy percent. Yeah. It's mu, it's several kids. Yeah.
Yeah.
And then after the, the first month's rent and everything is all caught up, do you guys have a follow-up?
Um, so they stay on our caseload for one year. So they're open for twelve calendar months. So we do follow their attendance, their GPA. If they are in court, I'm the one who goes to court and follows up. If they're not at court, I reach out to the school. I try to figure out why they aren't there. Is there something that we can assist with or, or connect them with? So we do follow up for that one calendar year. And then when we were talking about our state measurements, we have to measure the attendance and GPA and school performance at the very beginning. And then we have to show after the twelve months, our involvement improved that. So that's a big part. And if we don't meet those, um, benchmarks and we don't get our payout from the state, so it is.
And we do tell the families, you know, it's, it's not an endless pot of money by any means, and it's not, we keep them open for twelve months. That doesn't mean we pay their bills for twelve months. It's a lot of families, it is the one time, but we do have, you know, because we, we have our own budget as well. I don't want to make it sound like, you know, if, if you turn down the twenty five thousand, we're flat broke, but the, the, this money would allow us to kind of expand our reach and make our funds stretch further. So we, we can utilize, um, further help as kind of the carrot to kind of get incentivize them to participate. Hey, make, are you making your health solutions appointments? And then we have access to the infinite campus database for, for D sixty. So we ourselves can check their attendance, their grades. And if we see positive movement and a family calls us in month three, hey, we're a little tight, you know, on utility bills. I got, we have no problem, you know, helping them again. You know what I mean?
Other questions? Counselor Martinez or Tika?
Yes, thank you. Uh, I just wanted to say thank you for coming to us with this, uh, this, um, presentation and this ask for this ARPA money. Uh, you definitely have my support as unstable housing, um, particularly for students leaves them, uh, super vulnerable to making just bad decisions and getting caught up in the system, which ends up costing us much more than twenty five thousand dollars over the long term. So thank you for coming to this, to us with this ask. You have my support.
Yeah, I guess I had a, a very similar question to Councilman Flores that both D sixty and Pueblo County as well, in addition to Pueblo City got, received ARPA funds?
So I don't know if anyone from the mayor's or if I'm even allowed to say, but I, I got wind, uh, that this was staffed. Our request through the city was staffed with the county for their ARPA and
No match.
That they would match. I, 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 I don't know if that's contingent upon council approving it and then the county match is automatic or if we got to go to the county commissioners for that. So potentially this twenty five thousand could turn into fifty. Does that, if that makes sense, yeah.
Yeah, that would be great if they could match it and then D sixty could match it as well.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know. I don't know if I was supposed to say that or not. That's what they, that's what the feedback I got. So.
Yeah.
That's why we were just addressing the twenty fives.
Ms. Solano?
The internal task force and Mayor Gradisar directed, if I would call Sabina at the county. And, um, both he and I were in a meeting with her and she did say to let her know what county's direction and decision would be. And that she would take the, a request to the Lord County Commissioners to match the twenty five thousand, but there was no a direction to approach District sixty administration.
And will this be on the first reading? And will this be on the first reading, on the twelfth?
With your direction and and the. And the city attorney's calendar. I know it's not on the twelfth. It will be the twenty seventh and then the final reading into January. Is that correct? Yeah, the draft twelfth agenda came out earlier to this morning.
That was one of my questions because our board meets tomorrow. So I mean, I know we won't have a definite answer, but I'd like to at least maybe give them a timeline, you know what I mean?
Mr. Garcia.
I I took out two business cards to give to our guests tonight. And I want your business cards as well. I I've got to figure out where the money's gonna go. You are not a five oh one C three.
Correct. Pueblo County DHS is our fiscal agent. So I I just had assumed it would go to them. Because they 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 have a line item in their budget for our programs. Does that make sense? Pueblo County DHS is our fiscal agent. There is a line item in the Pueblo County budget that says collaborative management program. That's how we get paid. Yeah. So I bet that that might not answer your question, but that was my understanding, but I might be wrong.
Okay, so they, who's gonna sign the sub recipient agreement?
Would that be the the director of Tammy Torres, the director of Pueblo County DHS? I believe so. I could find that out tomorrow if that, yeah, we're our board meeting is tomorrow. Lee Hodge, who's the deputy director of Pueblo County DHS is our board chair. So I'll be, we have the board meeting tomorrow via Zoom and he's on it. So if you have any, you know, we I could get any feedback you want from him. Do you know what I mean? So would that be the question to ask them? Okay.
ARPA is strict on who gets the money. And so we have to identify. In particular. Who the fiscal agent is. So that's great. If Pueblo County, we don't call it DSS anymore.
DHS.
DHS, okay. That saves me a lot of.
Yeah, they they are our fiscal. So like, we're kind of odd ducks in more ways than one, but I mean, in the sense that we're housed with D sixty, we actually work for crossroads turning points. That's the employment agent for us. But we're paid out of Pueblo County DHS collaborative management money. So every month, Crossroads invoices Pueblo County DHS. For our salaries, all the costs associated with the program and then Pueblo County DHS cuts Crossroads a check. Out of our, out of that line item in their budget for collaborative management. So that that payout, I was telling you all every year that we get from the civil court fees that funds the program, that payment goes directly to Pueblo County every October. From the state, it gets paid right to the county and then it goes right into our line item.
Yeah, if you could find out who's gonna sign the sub recipient agreement. So the county attorney. May want the chair of the county board to sign. You know, I don't care frankly, but we have to say the money's going here and the quarterly reports will come from this person. So if you could find that out.
Yeah, we could get your cards. I could email you by tomorrow afternoon.
Okay.
Yeah, it sounds like you guys can discuss offline. I know that Counselor Warner had a question.
This is mainly the question would be for council. You know, I think we have about thirty thousand in council contingencies left over. Is that what we have? Do you have any idea how much is in there? Well, we put twenty five grand back into it from the good night. Oh, the fifteen. What is the balance? Do you know?
It's below five.
Below five thousand?
Four five thousand.
Well, that sucks. Okay.
This. This qualifies for ARPA. I just want to get the paperwork right.
Yeah, so it sounds like you guys can discuss offline. Regardless, it's going to be on first reading on the twenty seventh.
Okay.
First reading means it's just like a formality for bureaucracy sake. And then the second reading is going to be on the second Monday of, sorry, the first, yeah, the second Monday of January.
Okay.
January ninth. Thank you, Counselor Graham.
Yeah, that's that's plenty. I could report that to the board and.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Batalo and Ms. Garcia. Our final presentation is going to be around the City Start Blueprint Grant. So Ms. Solano, and I don't know if Ms. Cordova is online on Zoom.
Thank you, Madam Chair. She did have a family emergency and I will look for her if she's going to join me later. As I, as I flip through the slide deck quickly, I believe you all have a copy of the of the actual city. Okay, there is one printed for you. Julia must have it upstairs and she did have the family emergency. So you will have this in your, looks similar to this in your packets. And the slide.
Calendars, is that what you're talking about?
No, no, that is the, that's the Human Relations Commission calendars. It is the Colorado City Start Municipal Financial Empowerment.
Okay.
It's the conclusion of the year long grant. So.
So not the calendars?
Not the calendar. And I'll slip, I'll slip through this quickly. So the important paragraph that I'm going to stop on here is that the initiative is the second paragraph. Was supported by Bloomberg Philanthropies and it connects insights about the impact of financial instability on municipal governments. With tangible, sustainable strategies to improve families and financial lives. And if if you can flash back to Cities for Financial Empowerment that supported the city through four grants. And the first was in the height of COVID, the Financial Navigators Opportunity for Assistance that they called in. And the and Neighbor Works facilitated the call in a number and staffing for assistance for hunger relief and. And rent relief and utility relief. And that was a year long grant and city council actually supported the extension for. One final tax season last year of additional six thousand seven hundred dollars. This was the second to the opportunities from Cities for Financial Empowerment and it was the City Start Grant. And an opportunity to develop the written finished product called the Blueprint that would, after communicating with stakeholders. Provide a written document that could assist organizations in in having access to the documented information. The next slide, let's see. Okay, so my clicker. Is stuck. Wow, okay, I'm just gonna, I'll just keep, you're gonna drive? So you're not, he has magic touches. You need to be Tammy. Developing the City Start Grant and just to give you a timeline here in the process, we actually received this grant in December of twenty twenty through November of twenty twenty one. The stakeholder meetings took place. So we're, you know, you're asking, why are you a year late? Well, for a couple of reasons, we're a year late here. In November of twenty twenty one, the city lost the grant writer, Shelley Dunham, who to a different opportunity. And she was facilitating the leadership of this grant through the stakeholders and the meetings. And if you recall, then we brought on a new grant writer. In February of twenty twenty two, who didn't have the history with it, but also had an opportunity just to jump on other grants that were available and important priorities for the city. Through the passing of the IAJA and the BIL grants process. So during that time, the City Start Grant did offer an extension of time to complete the grant deliverables. And with Julia Cordova working as our ARPA coordinator in a part time capacity and out of the mayor's office, I asked if she would assist me. Who, of course, we didn't have a finance director during that time and we were closing the books and we were starting a budget. And so it's taken an extra eleven months to complete the process with the grant. With the process meaning the finished product of the blueprint. The next slide, oh, this slide is twenty different agencies participated. Thank you. Twenty different agencies participated in multiple stakeholder groups and you can see most of them are financial agencies. And organizations that assist in the community with direct service. The city isn't involved with direct service. Of of any sort of financial counseling or answering questions. We don't have a bank to call. We have partnerships and collaborations with those nonprofit organizations that do provide direct service. But there were twenty organizations who offered their recommendations and combining all of those into the next slide, please. That resulted in the strategies that are the result of stakeholder engagement. And they were to integrate financial empowerment with existing services in the community. To centralize the information so individuals would know where to access as as they might be in several different organizations throughout the city. To create opportunities for youth and adults to have access to financial empowerment. To collaborate with our financial institutions, not just our nonprofits in the community. And to promote the banking access among community residents. And next slide, please. And the the key components of the financial empowerment are to build assets, access to banking, consumer financial protection. Likes, for instance, there is to discourage payday loans. Those type of things with high fees and to try to get away from encouraging those types of businesses and individuals to. Access those on a regular basis. And then also financial education and counseling. With the ultimate goals being to increase your credit rating, to decrease your debt, increase savings. And we have so many families with at least one debt in collection. How do they, how do they refrain and keep from from happening to get their their debts into collection? The goals with respect to the City Start Grant were to establish a bank on coalition. And that started in May of twenty twenty one. And if you recall, city council directed the city to, they didn't accept the grant, didn't approve the grant that was offered to the city. And directed instead the mayor's office to find a nonprofit organization that could take the leadership in the direct service. Which we did just the very next day. United Way happened to be listening to the city council meeting that night. And called and stepped up to say, if if Cities for Financial Empowerment will will allow. United Way to accept the grant dollars that were that were only offered to municipalities at that time. They would offer to take the lead. It is established and it went live in September twenty twenty two. Which really encourages individuals who have trouble opening bank accounts to go to certain institutions who have signed on agreements. For lower, lower, lower service fees if there is a check that didn't clear for non sufficient funds. For those that wouldn't be eligible for a bank account, how they lower the requirements for for accessing and applications. So United Way is currently working on that and they've gone live for about the last ninety days, bringing on more and more of the banks in the city. To be a bank on institutions, which do require lower fees, different standards and adherence to the federal rules. The goal too was to establish the Pueblo's Financial Empowerment Center and that's the next slide. And it actually, we are in the process of 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 applying and waiting to hear receipt of that grant later this week. Hopefully it comes through and then we'll be bringing to city council the the request to allow the city to be the fiscal agent. However, in the process of this, the city has awarded, you know, the United Way to be the service provider. Again, the city is not providing the direct services. The grant required a match in the first year. It's a two year grant of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And the delay in what our plans were, you can see from November to twenty twenty one, till we hope go live of January twenty twenty three is. It was difficult to secure the remaining fund, uh, grant match. City council approved fifty thousand dollars from the ARPA lost revenue to go towards this match. The county approved fifty thousand dollars. And those were from TANF dollars that were actually part of the DHS at the county. So we had a hundred thousand dollars and United Way stepped up and they secured the additional hundred thousand from two different. Funding sources and the Cities for Financial Empowerment have accepted their match. And if we are awarded two years, we're responsible then for securing a two hundred thousand dollar match. Into year two and further from that, it will be sustainable through United Way with, you know, city and county support at whatever a plan still to be developed. So hopefully we'll be back with a request to accept that grant, which would be independent of this City Start Grant. And the third goal of this City Start Blueprint was to end in this. This result. With examples of financial empowerment and knowledge being, and it's pretty small font here. To integrate financial empowerment services into the work of community organizations. And you know that United Way and Neighbor Works does this beautifully. United, you know, Neighbor Works works regularly with individuals to work towards. Obtaining housing. And other financial counseling as well. Feels like there's enough work in the community that United Way would work with organizations also. To be co-locators of a relationship building of one on one financial counseling. In a, in a, not a one on one, that is just one time only, but in a, in a regular session. They would conduct outreach and community awareness campaigns, work with K twelve and higher education to build financial knowledge among young people. Right now you see that the libraries offer both online and in person. Financial empowerment sessions and really facilitated by the Bank of the San Juans for a good part of what their relationship is. And lastly, offer convenient and accessible financial empowerment services. Resulting in the recommendations were, and then we turned into quick facts. And the Tatiana, Dr. Tatiana Bailey and the dashboard came in to partnership with the city at the perfect time. Where all of the ratios that you see in the last part of the document that when you receive it. Are are confirmed and verified and match the economic dashboard one hundred percent. Along with the census information that she has shared a week ago and I won't go through all those particular percentages. And also tapping into the prosperity scoreboard that is operated out of Denver. So the three, Julia did a great job of confirming that all of the ratios that are included in the blueprint do in fact tie out. That have to do with the population in Pueblo County, the unemployment rate at a date certain. The average poverty rate between the state of Colorado, the county and the city, the median household income, which is. The median household income is fourteen point five percent lower for Pueblo County. And forty two point five percent lower than in the state of Colorado in our community. So all of these ratios that we'll find in this blueprint, we can share with those organizations that do provide service. Financial asset income, the asset poverty rate, the liquid asset poverty rate, all of those rates are consistent with Dr. Bailey's dashboard. And they're included in this blueprint. Looking for the future, we are, we are, I believe, Julia has printed about a hundred of these blueprints. Intended to be distributed to those organizations that do support a direct service with along with all of you. And across the county as well. And looking forward then to receiving the financial empowerment grant and returning in, I hope in January. Requesting city council support to accept the financial aid in that grant. That concludes the update. Is there any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Solano. What questions are there from council?
I I do have one, a PS, postscript.
Ms. Solano.
We did not spend the twenty five thousand dollars because we were in the middle of COVID. We did all of this stakeholder group online. Through Zoom meetings. So we got ready to say, do we give back this twenty five thousand? It's on our books and finances. Grant provider, what do you want us to do with these resources? And they did not want the money back. What they wanted us to do was be creative and spend it in the community. So kudos again to Julia and Yari. They created a pathway to higher ed. That with a City Start approved a lunch, a two hour workshop, a hundred dollar gift card for completers. And the partnered with the district whose counselors identified students who were not automatically going to go to college. They were individuals who showed good promise, but probably had a more difficult time finding the resources to get to college. Our two staff members have done an incredible job of presenting this now about four or five times. And still we did not spend down the twenty five thousand. So they said, okay, you two, create now a credit building workshop. And we've partnered with the Bank of the San Juans and other and the United Way and provided two of those. With a two hour workshop, a lunch and a hundred dollar gift card at the conclusion of those two hours. We still didn't spend down the twenty five thousand and City Start said, spend the rest of them on those gift cards. We're going to lock them up in finance and we're going to continue those workshops. Into twenty twenty three. So it was really nice to have that support from the Cities for Financial Empowerment. Postscript. Thank you.
Nice. How many, do you know how many students participated in those?
Fifteen from each school of each of the four schools, plus they went out to Paragon. So I would say sixty to date. And the two workshops, the first one had six. So they came back, both Julia and Yari, a little bit disappointed that they had six at a Saturday workshop. But they circled back. They they marketed it a little bit differently and the second one had thirty five.
Nice. Counselor Martinez Ortega?
Thank you, Ms. Solano. I'm curious if you're hearing any feedback about a need for. This booklet in Spanish as well.
As a matter of fact, we are and have to tap into the resources to be able to print it in Spanish. And hoping that the Public Food Project, who has resources for the conversion into Spanish language could assist. I have to be able to tie it though to to meet both grants and I haven't completed that task yet.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thanks for looking into that as well.
Yeah, this is gonna be quick and it it has to do with financial empowerment, but it's on kind of a different subject. And it has to do with the price of gas in Pueblo. And I think there's many more examples. But when you bring up loaf and jug, okay, and there's others. And you look at the prices at every city. In Colorado. Something is going, something's definitely wrong in Pueblo. And give you an example, in fact, when I put in Pueblo, it says. And to give you an example, in fact, when I put in Pueblo, it says not accessible. It's almost like they don't want us to know. But Arvada is paying two ninety eight, Parker, two eighty six, Castle Rock, two ninety seven, and it goes on and on. Either right at three dollars or three eighty. And I think, what, what is gas now? Like three sixty nine here in Pueblo?
It's always been like that.
Well, there's got to be, there's got to be, there's got to be a reason because I think we're getting, we are getting screwed in Pueblo. And, and it's, and when you start talking about the poverty level here, the CPI index, it says we should be lower in a lot of, lot of products. My question is really maybe, do we have the ability to talk to the DA? And ask him to investigate what the heck is going on with pricing in Pueblo, Colorado, that I think our citizens are being screwed. And, and especially now with prices going up everywhere, this disparity and, and the proof. You know, why is Ford Collins or Broomfield or Centennial so much lower than we are? Almost twenty percent. It doesn't make any sense. And I'm, I'm, I'm asking a question.
I know the mayor is online, so I'll take that to, that request to.
Could we keep that on the radar screen? And that might even be something for the attorneys general to look into as they represent more of. I, I don't know whether or not they would even agree with me, you know, but it's just so flagrant and so obvious that every time I go fill up my, my car, it makes me angry. It's so much. You know, I mean, if there would be a small difference, but it's such a big gap.
It's a big difference. And then also with the disparity of the median incomes. As it's like fourteen point nine two lower.
We've got the, we've got the numbers. But anyway, I had to vent.
That, that was a very, a very good vent.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna add to that, Ben. You know, as you know, this has been going on for forever since the beginning of time. And I was told one time that the higher density cities charged more because they made up or charged less because they made up for it in products that were sold in the store. But that's not the case at all because you can go to smaller communities than ours and the gas is cheaper. So it's, it, it never makes any sense. And you never get a logical answer for it ever unless the stores are just getting together and, and saying this is how much we're going to charge.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Well, going back to the Financial Empowerment Center, if, if the, when the city is awarded that grant, will you let us know via email? Great, thank you. So seeing no other business at seven twenty four and I include this work session.